Please call the roll.
Hoffman.
President.
Lard.
Here.
Swallow.
Here.
Adair.
Here.
Brooks.
Parsons.
Here.
Bowman.
Here.
Item number four is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved in city council meetings will be approved by one vote of the council. Any member of the council desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda. In place for discussion is the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items: approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of February 18th, 2025; approval of the minutes of the special meeting of February 25, 2025; and approval of claims in the amount of $294,146.39 and payroll expenses of $262,540.06. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Have a motion by Mr. Hoffman and second by Mr. Bowman to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Bowman.
Yes.
Swallow.
Yes.
Adair.
Yes.
Lard.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Item six, reports from staff. There's no planning commission meeting to report. Hospital authority meeting from February 25th.
I guess the main things we talked about other than the routine business were we're going out for bids for some ailing air conditioner equipment and there was a lot of discussion on how the EMS. That was the true extent of the meeting.
Any questions for Mr. Bowman? Next item is the Alva Library Board meeting on March 10th. Mrs. Swallow.
Apprentices have gotten the computer system up and working at the library so that the students can work out on the computers again. They're replacing flooring this week that is cracking. They have a new website that was presented on Thursday and they mentioned that the city council candidate forum is March the 24th at the Career Tech at 7:00 PM for everyone that's interested in attending.
Is that on Monday?
Yes.
Okay, that's the...
That's the...
Northwest Oklahoma Alliance at the Capitol. Okay.
So I'll handle that one.
Any questions for Mrs. Swallow? Thank you, Gail. Item D is the Alva Rean Authority meeting on March 4th. The minutes are in your packet. Are there any questions regarding that meeting? Thank you. Next item is the Tourism Tax Commission meeting on March 19th, 2025. Mrs. Beard, you have...
Well, it was supposed to be this Wednesday, but it'll be March 26th and we have a couple of requests, so it hasn't happened yet.
Oh, yeah, March 22th hasn't happened yet. Okay.
Nope.
It'll be in March 26th.
Okay. Was no Board of Adjustments meeting. Alva Regional Airport Commission meeting on March 10th. I was not in attendance, but fortunately our newspaper editor was. There's a great article in the paper. I'm sure that talks about all the things that went on at the airport meeting. I do know the agenda included five-year plan and as well as executive session for airport manager. Any questions on that? Steve was there too. Steve could probably answer questions.
Go about it.
All right. Next item is Parks and Recreation Commission meeting on March 12th. Mrs. Swallow.
The pool and bathhouse are going well and they're still on target to open in May. We're reviewing the ARC's policies and procedures. We have purchased some new things for Hatfield Park, which was replacing some defective swings and a slide. And we've ordered more picnic tables and they're working on their budget.
Any questions for Mrs. Swallow? Thank you. There's no cemetery meeting. Finest Committee meeting for March 17th. Dr. Lard.
Yeah, it was a pretty normal meeting. We talked a little bit about the upcoming budget retreat in May. Everyone's feeling optimistic about the direction the city's moving going into next year. We also have two CDs coming up for bid that are a total of $193,000 between the two. We've been getting around 4.3% on the last few. We've been getting down a little, but interest rates have been going down. Sales tax was up 5% year-to-date from last year, which is a plus, more money coming in. Say, he also said the next few months we'll have the P-carts up and going for all the departments to start using, which should help with just tracking expenses for auditing, traveling, fraud, things like that, and getting the rewards for those. So that was good. We also got the cyber security grant, so our savings account balance is actually at about $385,000 instead of the $167 listed in your packet, but that was about most of what we talked about.
Anybody have any questions for Dr. Lard? All right, Mayor's Report. Well, I'll kind of piggyback on some of what Dr. Lard said, and I want to start by thanking all of the department heads and staff that met with us last week. We had our budget retreat, or not our retreat, our department had budget meetings last week, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. For the most part, everybody came very well-prepared. The budgets, like Dr. Lard said, are looking pretty favorable, no major surprises. We are anticipating probably about a 14%, 13% to 14% increase in electric bills based on their rates going up. Other than that, we're tracking along pretty good with not a very significant change in CPI or inflation's kind of leveled out a little bit, not going up near as rapidly as it was. So we'll have the retreat on May, or excuse me, May 3rd. It's a Saturday and we're working on the venue at this point still, but it'll be a Saturday, probably a few hours like what we've had in years past and we'll have the department heads there and council members so we can have those discussions about their priorities. But like I said, no real surprises from any of the departments and we'll have that there, a little over and up, up and half. This week, I might steal your thunder, the community leadership development class will be here in Alva Thursday evening and most of the day on Friday. This is a program with the municipal league. Manager Ford is participating in it this year, or even one this year. Last year, I think our co-enforcement officer, Mr. Grimsley, participated in it and we've had some staff that participated in that in years past, but that's a pretty cool program. They go around the state with, you know, they've got a project that they do, but they learn from what other cities are doing and it's been a while since they've had one of these in Alva. So excited to have them back in Alva this year. Lieutenant Governor's Turkey Hunt is coming up April 16th, 17th, and 18th. For those that don't know, this is one of the biggest economic development events that we do in Alva and Woods County each year, and we've been doing it for about 30 years or so in Alva. And it's, it is an economic development event under the mask of a turkey hunt. So we do hope that there will be some turkeys out there that folks can come in and shoot, but there are about 10 or 12 invited guests that are coming in and look at Alva in terms of what opportunities there might be available here for their businesses and their investments. So that'll be good. Mentioned earlier, the Northwest Oklahoma Alliance will have its day at the Capitol on March 24th. That'll be actually at the History Center across from the Capitol. And then OML is having its legislative reception day at the Capitol on April 2nd. It's a Wednesday evening. And so any of the council members that would like to attend that, get with Mr. Ford and he can get you the details on that. There are no fees with that, but there'll be, if you've never been to the legislative reception, it'll be invited legislators and then a bunch of municipal officials there to help make sure they understand what we need out in our cities. Aside from that, I'll yield up the remainder of my minutes to Mr. Ford for the business manager. Or is anybody have any questions?
Yes, I do. Will Mr. Godwin be at the turkey hunt?
He will be here Wednesday, for sure, and he will be doing the presentation side of it and he'll be there for the Wednesday evening dinner. I don't believe he'll be hunting.
He's not hunting, no.
Then he'll be here talking with the people.
Oh, and our, I call it our visioning meeting for economic development. That is scheduled for April 10th and that'll be from 1:00 to 5:00 with dinner following at ABC over here. Any other questions? Manager's Report. Mr. Ford?
Well, I was obviously got the report done, time to attach to the agenda, so I hope that everybody got a chance to read that. Kind of take you back on what the mayor's saying. So Thursday night, we are having the CLD class over at the ABC and Waste Connections has agreed to sponsor all the pizza. So it won't cost a city or anybody else anything. Everybody that wants beer would be on their own or their own pocket, but Waste Connections are going to pay for all the pizza, so that'd be good.
Can I jump in?
Yeah.
Waste Connection is also covering all the costs with sanitation pickup for the turkey hunt event and then apprentices is working on some things that are going to help out with that as well.
Okay. Let's see, now I must have tripped up. Sorry. Jeez.
Don't call me, Bowman.
Thanks are going pretty well. The guys are staying busy. I know that the street department's really ramping up, getting ready for chip seal season. They're going to be busy this summer, I promise you that. Water departments are staying busy, haven't had as many leaks as usual, but they're doing a lot of preventive maintenance and everything like that. So honestly, our fire department has been busy with these wildfires, brush fires and stuff, but those seem to calm down hopefully for the next couple of days. And other than that, everybody's just staying busy doing good things for City of Alva.
Any questions for Mr. Ford?
Have we got in any of our new vehicles from Enterprise?
No.
No, not yet.
We had to order, we ordered most of them. Only one we didn't order was the police interceptor, the Explorer, because it's a 26-month lead time on those Explorers. So that's one we're just going to go to the dealership and find. It's already there, the law enforcement package on it. We just have to do the outfit, but all the trucks we ordered, so.
I think the last time when we bought police vehicles, when we bought the F-150s, it was because of the lead time on the Explorers.
Right, yeah. But they seem, they seem to like the F-15s, it's better now. This is a word I'm getting from all the PD guys, so.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Ford? All right, we'll move on to item seven. I think the, it's in the packet, isn't it? The city economics report? I haven't looked at it, but maybe you have any questions about what was in that report? All right, we'll move on to item... Public comment. I'm going to move, is there reasons down there?
When I started adding things, did I click too high? Did we click below that one?
I'm going to move item 19 up. Remarks and inquiries by citizens. This is a chance, if you'd like to make a public comment, glad you're all here, if you'd like to make a public comment, we'd ask that you please identify yourself and we'll allow you two minutes to address the council.
I'll make any comment.
I will give you the caveat that we can't discuss it with you, but we can listen to you.
Since I just got here, I don't even know whether you've already covered it, but on solid waste, on the rates, I question why residential that has two polytainers is $40.33 a month, but small businesses just got the same two polytainers or $87 a month. Seems like to me that's punishing your businesses an awful lot. And that's basically my comments is I think that needs to be something that needs to be corrected.
So when we get to the point in the agenda where we make council comments, I got you covered.
Okay.
Who are you and what's your name?
Oh, Tom Crenshaw.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, though. Any other public comment? I'm going to make a note so I don't forget. Okay. Next item is item number eight. Discussion and action to enter into executive session pursuant to 25 OS 307 B1 to discuss City of Alva EMS performance appraisals for the following full-time positions: EMS Director, Paramedic, and EMT Advanced Four positions. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So I moved.
I'll second.
Have a motion from Mr. Adair and second by Dr. Lard to enter into executive session as stated in item number eight. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Adair.
Yes.
Lard.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Bowman.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Swallow.
Yes.
Okay, I'll, Bridget will call you back in here in just a minute, but I'll ask everybody to leave except council members, leave the council.
This is on a permanent plan, there are nine copies there.
Executive session to regular session. Item 10 is discussion and action to approve contract with survival flight. We're going to table item 10. Take no action on that and move on, or actually I need a motion if we're going to table that. And I have a motion to table.
I'll make a motion to table item 10 as stated in the agenda.
I'll second. Motion from Mr. Bowman and second from Mr. Parsons to table item 10 as stated in the agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Adair.
Yes.
Swallow.
Yes.
Lard.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Item 12, a discussion and action to approve City of Alva Ordinance 2025-004, an ordinance...
One of them above it.
Oh, they ran together in my notes. All right. 2025-001, an ordinance amending the City of Alva Code of Ordinances, Chapter 44, Article 5, Solid Waste, Section 44-261. This is regarding the placement and removal of the polycarts, right? Okay. Between, let's see, Drew, have you, you've had a chance to review this?
Yes.
Okay. So the feedback I got when this was, before this was on the agenda, or after I got put on the agenda for last month, felt like we could be more specific and maybe less punitive. And so I worked with a couple of citizens and got this to the city manager and attorney for, you know, final language, but basically you all have had a chance to review it. Do we need to have discussion?
I like it much better. I mean, this way.
But describe secured away from the street. What is meant by securing it away from the street?
Secured away from the street, if I were to define that, I don't know how to put it a lot, but if I were to define that, means it's not rolling around and it's...
It doesn't have to be in a little...
It doesn't have to be tied down. It doesn't have to be tied down or locked up, just not, not in a position to be a nuisance, basically is what I mean.
Unless it's 80 miles an hour.
You know, God might have other plans.
Yes, he does other days.
And if you want to hear God laugh, tell him your plans. So, all right, any further discussion? I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the City of Alva Ordinance 2025-001, an ordinance amending the City of Alva Code of Ordinances, Chapter 44, Article 5, Solid Waste, Section
Have a motion from Mr. Bowman and second from Dr. Lard to approve City of Alva Ordinance 2025-001 as stated in item 11 of the agenda. Is there any further discussion?
Just have a quick question on the number, because we have this ordinance down here and it jumps to 004, so I was...
We tabled this last meeting. This was number one.
That makes sense, okay.
But since we tabled it, yeah, we tabled it.
And we approved two of three last...
Oh, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that's the number, right, okay.
So yes, that's the correct number. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bowman.
Yes.
Lard.
Yes.
Adair.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Swallow.
Yes.
Item 12 now is a discussion, is a discussion and action to approve City of Alva Ordinances 2025-004, an ordinance amending the City of Alva Ordinance 2017-004, which is our fee schedule. Correct?
Yes.
Okay. The only thing I believe that's changed in this from 2017 is going to be the, the fees for violating...
Yes.
Ordinance 2025-001, and that is a $20 fee fine with a...
$10 court.
$10 court costs and so a $30 total. And we probably need to update the rest of these if it hadn't been since 2017, but it's not, we're not doing that right now.
Well, that's street people.
Yeah, I know, I know, so too.
Any discussion?
Only one question. All of the other court costs are $19.
Mayor asked to keep this as cheap as possible.
I like it. I got no problem with that. I wanted to make sure that most of the...
That's a simple answer, Ford. No, that was, that was on purpose.
Is that standard? I don't know why court costs were $19 in 2017.
I don't know.
They haven't gone up, though. So.
I was just out of law school and I didn't have that thought.
Drew's up.
Any further discussion? If there is none, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve City of Alva Ordinance 2025-004, an ordinance amending the City of Alva Ordinance 2017-004.
I'll second. Have a motion by Mr. Bowman and second by Mr. Parsons to approve City of Alva Ordinance 2025-004, amending ordinance 2017-004. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bowman.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Lard.
Yes.
Swallow.
Yes.
Adair.
Yes.
Thank you. Item 13 is discussion and action to authorize the city business manager and the mayor to sign engagement letter with Crawford and Associates to allow them to provide accounting and consulting services for fiscal year 2025, 2026, and authorize the mayor and/or city business manager to sign all documents. Has there, have there been any changes to their terms?
No, it's the same.
Okay. Crawford has been working with us for quite some time. They're basically an invaluable resource in municipal finance. In fact, they do the majority of any of the reputable, all of the reputable training in the state with municipal clerks and treasurers and business managers and...
Finance managers.
Finance managers and all of that. So I feel like they've been, I would recommend approval, particularly if none of the terms and fees are changing. Now, and this is just for the, is this for audit, does this include audit press?
Oh, yeah, it does include audit press.
Okay. Questions?
I'll make a motion for the city business manager and mayor to sign the engagement letter with Crawford and Associates to allow them to provide accounting and consulting services for FY 2025-2026, and authorize the mayor and/or city business manager to sign all documentation. Second.
Have a motion from Mr. Bowman and second from Dr. Lard to authorize the city business manager and/or the mayor to sign the engagement letter with Crawford and Associates to allow them to provide the accounting as stated in item 13 of the agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Lard.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Adair.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Swallow.
Yes.
Item 14 is discussion and action to declare the 2011 Ford ambulance VIN number 1FDUF4GT00BEB81920 as surplus.
This is one of our latest, we've got using more, so we might as well see what we can get for it.
This is the one that sits at public works.
There's two at public works now. The one's already on an auction website that ends this Friday. I just need this one to be surplus so I can put it on the auction website and then get it going.
I would move to declare the 2011 Ford ambulance VIN number 1FDUF4GT0BEB81920 as surplus. Second.
Drew, do we have to re-bet the number?
I didn't want to do that.
Ask state of the region.
I have a motion by Mr. Adair and second by Mr. Bowman to declare the 2011 ambulance as surplus.
Which ambulance, sir?
As stated in item 14 of the agenda. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Adair? Please call the vote.
Adair.
Yes.
Bowman.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Swallow.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Lard.
Yes.
Item 15 is discussion and action to declare the 1993 Buick Roadmaster car VIN number
1G4BT5373PR413635 as surplus. This is the old car from the homestead. I think they, this is the last vehicle that the city purchased for the homestead before the management agreement between the utility authority and the hospital authority. So I don't, it ran when we parked it.
It still runs.
It needed some air in the tires.
It sat out there for like seven years, running out there in air in the tires and put a baton in it and started it and drove it to public works.
It'll make somebody a great car.
I'm not, I'm already got it.
As long as we declare it surplus.
I've already got a buyer lined up for it, too.
Talk to him, Charlie.
He'll be happy about that. He's pretty cool.
Is there, or is there any further discussion or questions?
Can that be used as a courtesy car for the airport?
It's not that good.
Not that good. Hey, it runs, it's not that good.
I have motion to approve item 15 as stated in the agenda.
Second. There was a motion by Dr. Lard and second by Mr. Hoffman to declare the 1993 Buick Roadmaster stated in item 15 of the agenda as surplus. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Lard.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Bowman.
Yes.
Swallow.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Adair.
Yes.
Out of 16, discussion and action to declare the 1997 Ford Crown
Item 16, discussion in action to declare the 1997 Ford Crown Victoria VIN number 2FALP74WXVX234838 as surplus.
I'm not sure where this car is sitting, but it doesn't run and it's got a number of dead cats inside of it. Uh, so it's.
Talk it up.
Yeah, we, we, if this is surplus, we've got a plan for it. Uh, not having it around anymore.
Ready. Any questions regarding this vehicle? I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve item 16 as stated in the agenda.
Second.
Got a motion by Dr. Lard and a second by Mr. Hoffman to declare the 1997 Ford Crown Victoria as surplus as stated in item 16. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Lard?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Adair?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Item 17, discussion in action to enter into executive session pursuant to 25 OS 307 B1 and B2 to discuss fiscal year 2526 City of Alva IAFF Local 3782 negotiations and city business manager annual performance evaluation.
I would move to enter into executive session pursuant to 25 OS 307 B1 and B2 to discuss FY 2526 City of Alva IAFF Local 3782 negotiations and city business manager annual performance evaluation.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Adair and a second by Mr. Hoffman to enter into executive session per item 17. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Adair?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Lard?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Um, on the business manager's contract, uh, none on the agenda, and, uh, so we will go to remarks and inquiries by citizens. Now, I remembered that, I'm gonna go to new business and there is none, and now I'm gonna go to remarks and inquiries by council members. For the, the record, uh, Mr. Crenshaw had to leave, but, um, we have, uh, implemented, uh, there's no need for council action, um, but with the commercial versus residential rates on, on picking up trash, um, that has been remedied.
For polycarts.
Or, yeah, for polycarts. So, the, uh, commercial customers using polycarts in the City of Alva should see their bill reduced in the next billing cycle?
Yes.
That's the same rate as.
That's $5, roughly $5 more.
It's a little bit more, yeah.
But it's down, it's down reasonably.
And that's due to Waste Connection charges us more to pick those up than they charge us for residential.
It's actually gonna be like 5380.
Compared to a 47?
Yeah, it's gonna be the same as that outside.
So, that's, but it's better than, uh, 87.
Any other remarks and inquiries by council members?
I want to say thank you to the fire department, EMS, and police. Uh, they did a tremendous job, uh, supporting the local basketball team and Ladybugs had a heck of a run. They organized a lead back into town when they won the area championship. It was nearly midnight, but, uh, they got the, the nice escort coming in with the lights and all that kind of stuff. I thought that was really cool. Uh, and I want to congratulate our Ladybug basketball team. Uh, qualified for the state tournament, qualified for the, uh, quarterfinals, uh, won a game there on the big house floor the last year of that and had a chance to play against the eventual state champions. They did a fantastic job. And then police, fire, EMS again did a big honk out for them on the Thursday when they left for state. It was awesome and I appreciate the city pulling together to show support for the school. And then Steve, another thank you for one of your departments. I don't know who it was that cleaned up that tree that fell across Oklahoma Boulevard first few days of March, but, uh, that got cleaned up really, really quick.
Bush camera.
That was fantastic.
Street department.
So, I appreciate them getting out there and getting after that after hours so fast. That was great.
Any other remarks by council members?
I want to do a reminder, uh, on your Facebook page about grass in the streets.
Okay, yeah, I need that.
I just drove by yesterday and noticed somebody was blowing grass out in the street.
We'll put something out on that tomorrow. Uh, because you're right, that is, that is a violation of city ordinance that you cannot blow your grass out in the street. So, thank you.
Any other remarks? All right, we're adjourned. I'll open the regional development authority meeting. Please call the roll.
Hoffman?
Present.
Lard?
Here.
Swallow?
Here.
Adair?
Here.
Brooks? Parsons? Bowman?
Here.
I have three, discussion in action on consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at AUA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda in place for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of minutes of the regular meeting in February 18th, 2025. Item B, approval of claims in the amount of $339,179.26 and payroll expenses of $20,940.14. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
A motion from Mr. Bowman and a second from Mr. Hoffman to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bowman?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Lard?
Yes.
Adair?
Yes.
Item five, discussion in action to approve Ascend Commercial Builders Change Order Number Seven, increasing the budget for the bathhouse flooring replacement at a cost of $16,675. Authorize the mayor and/or city business manager to sign all documentations.
So, the floors all screwed up when they finally got everything torn out and did everything, and it wasn't level, it wasn't gonna be a nice flat surface. Uh, and there's some real concern that the sealant overlay, whatever you call it, would not adhere to it. Um, and the recommendation from the contractor, from the, uh, general contractor was to jackhammer it all up and just go in with new, with rebar and everything else. And so, that's what this is for, and it's, it, it's gotta be done. It's, the other one's not gonna be, it's, it's gonna fail and be bad in a matter of, you know, most of years.
Any questions? entertain a motion?
Motion to approve item five on the agenda, or as stated in the agenda.
Second.
Got a motion from Dr. Lard and a second from Mr. Hoffman to approve change order number seven for $16,675 as stated in number five of the agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Lard?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Adair?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
There's nothing that qualifies as new business, therefore we are adjourned, and we will open the regular Alva Utility Authority meeting. Please call the roll.
Hoffman?
Here.
Lard?
Here.
Swallow?
Here.
Adair?
Here.
Brooks?
Parsons?
Here.
Bowman?
Here.
Item three, discussion in action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at AUA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda in place for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting in February 18th, 2025. Item B, approval of the minutes of the special meeting in February 25th, 2025. And item C, approval of claims in the amount of $550,390.31 and payroll expenses of $25,884.60. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Lard?
Got a motion by Mr. Bowman and a second by Dr. Lard to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bowman?
Yes.
Lard?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Adair?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Item five, discussion in action to approve Corin Main Change Order Number Seven, decreasing the budget for the DWSRF water meter replacement project for a savings of $16,341 from the original contract price, and authorize the mayor and/or city business manager to sign all documentation. Um, what's that all about?
So.
I like it.
So, when they basically quit, uh, quit installing the meters for us, and we took over installing it last year in the meters for us, that's the amount of money they would have to pay a contractor to install those 300 meters. And somebody flat out told them we're paying that amount, that amount of money on the contract. They wanted a full contract, and I'm like, no, I'm not paying you for work you didn't do. And so, they sent me a change order for that amount to cover the cost of labor for those meters. We started paying for the meters, nothing wrong. We got the material, we just wanted to pay for the labor they did for them.
Pretty convenient, 'cause I think we just spent $16,000 somewhere else.
Yeah, bathhouse.
Oh, really?
I entertain a motion.
Motion to approve item five as stated in the agenda.
Second.
A motion by Dr. Lard and a second by Mr. Bowman to approve Change Order Number Seven, decreasing the water meter replacement project by $16,341 as stated by number five. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Lard?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Adair?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
We do not have any new business and you are adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.